Ask one time.[1.12][1.12](Laughter).[2.12][2.12](Laughter).
Good afternoon. I'd like to welcome you to the September 23 Oklahoma City Planning Commission meeting, and ask you if you have cell phones or pagers, if you would silence those at this time, please. If you are not the applicant and you have come to talk to us today about a case, there are sign up sheets, they're available outside on the table outside the chambers, if you'd sign up, we'd be happy to hear from you. And the first order of business today is the minutes of our last meeting.
Move approval of minutes.
Okay, we have a motion, a second to approve the minutes, cast your votes. Minutes are approved. J.J., continuances.
Continuances. We have three uncontested continuances. Item 20, S.P.U.D. 586 deferred to October 14th. Item 21, S.P.U.D. 552 deferred to October 28th. And item 22, subdivision regulation amendment, we'd request that be referred back to staff.
Did anyone come down today to talk to us about items 20, 21, or 22?
Move the uncontested continuance.
Okay, we have a motion, a second to approve the continuances, cast your votes, and they're approved.
We have four new requests for continuances, and these are all to October 14th. Item 4, S.P.U.D. 579. Item 10, comp plan amendment. And item 11, the associated P.U.D. 1422. And item 16, C. 6240.
Same question again, did anyone come down today to talk to us about items 4, 10, 11, or 16 on our agenda?
I move the approval of the continuances, the additional continuances.
Okay, we have a motion, a second to approve the additional continuances, cast your votes. Those are approved. Are there any additional continuance requests from the public today?
Good afternoon, Chris Anderson with S.M.C. Engineering. I've got item number nine on the docket, C. 6241. And I have a variance request on that item, and I recognize we only have five commissioners there, so I guess I need to ask for a continuance on that, or are we expecting someone else to show up?
We do not know if Mr. Ellers will be here or not.
Okay.
So if you want to just take your, want to wait a few minutes and see what happens?
Yeah, that'd be fine, we can push it to the end, and that'd be great.
Okay, thank you. Sure.
Members of the commission, my name is Nathan Richter, and I have item number, items number five and six, which I would at this time request be continued to the October 14 date referenced earlier.
Have you given some consideration to doing a P.U.D. and combining the items that would be five and six into a single application?
Yes, sir, we've been discussing this with the staff as early as 11 o'clock this after, this morning, and that's the purpose for the continuance, is to continue to develop that and work with my client.
I would encourage you to pursue that avenue.
Yes, sir.
Commissioners, with, no one, no one else is interested in that item here today, I assume, from?
(Inaudible).
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to continue items five and six, cast your votes. You're approved, we'll see you in a few weeks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other requests? Okay, we'll go to items for individual consideration.
First item for public hearing is S.P.U.D. 587, application by Britton Christian Church to resume 922 Northwest 91st Street to this S.P.U.D. simplified planned unit development district.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, Brian Coon with Coon Engineering, representing an applicant. I don't know if very many of you have seen this church location, they've been doing a lot of improvements over the past couple of years, neighborhood church, that we're asking for your approval for a spud. I'll get right to the P, the T.E.s, items one, we're fine with item two and three, as long, J.J. and I talked earlier today, as long as we're going to be able to do what we want to do, we're fine with doing those, just the straight rules, and those are fine. Four, we are asking for, we are, the church owns property to the west, and they're looking at surrounding properties. The right of ways on those street on 91st is 90 foot wide, normally it's 50. South of it, it's 60 feet wide, normally again, it's 50. We're asking that if we own the property across the street from wherever we will be developing, that we would have a zero setback, because there's already additional right of way more than normal. Now, if we don't own the properties, it'll be 10 feet, and I met with Commissioner Powers the other day out there and showed her all those different areas, and I believe she's okay with that, I don't speak for her, but again, especially on 91st, like I said, it's 90 foot of right of way, it's almost the right of way of an arterial street, so we would like to have that added to T.E. four. T.E. five, we are fine with not doing a pole sign. We did talk with staff, they were okay with us doing the E.M.D. level one, electronic message board at, but it's only at the corner of Ollie and 91st, and actually, I was just talking with church representative, they're going to replace the sign that we saw out there the other day, so it'll be a monument sign, but they are trying to be able to get, you know, anybody that's at that corner, which is the main corner, will be able to see, so.
Now, we're talking, Brian, about the southwest corner of that intersection?
Southwest or the southeast corner of that intersection, we own both sides, but right now, the only plan is for the one sign at the southeast corner of the intersection. So it would, that, okay? And it would be a monument sign, ask for this, to ask for the staff, for staff report. Six, we're okay with six. On seven, we're fine. Eight, fine. Nine, we're going to remove any language that says that the spud will keep us from having to do revocable permits, we're fine with that. Ten, and again, when I met with Commissioner Powers out there, showed her what our parking lot lays out, we would like to ask to delete number 10. Very, the streets, I think we were out there 15 or 20 or 30 minutes, there wasn't a car go by the whole time, but it could really enhance the safety of the parking lot if we can have both the driveways on the north and the south, so we'd like to delete 10. Eleven, we agree with if we can add, unless it's a private sewer line, which we're going to turn that, we're going to privatize that sewer line, so that way we can build over it if we want to. No one else is served by that line but us, and I've already talked with Nathan Maidenwald in Public Works, and he's fine with that. Actually, it was his recommendation, which really helped us a lot. And then, on what, J.J., what do you want me to do on that next note?
Why don't we leave it in, and we'll make a determination between now and council?
Okay.
We have, we'll get somebody from traffic to out and look at it.
Okay.
At those right, wide right of ways, and make a determination.
Okay.
Okay.
But it'll be up, subject to what, well, so it'll be up to council to make that decision, then?
Yeah, this, the, easily, a decision always comes up at council, it's not really discussed at planning commission.
Okay, that's fine. Be glad to answer any questions you may have. No one has signed up, commissioners?
Item approved.
With?
Yes, we can change.
Okay, we have a motion, a second to approve, item one is conditioned, cast your votes, and it's approved. Thank you. I'm going away. Not yet. One more thing.
Item two, C.E. 792, application by Britton Christian Church to close the east-west alley located at west of Francis and north of 90th Street.
Same site, no one signed up.
Item approved.
Second. Okay, we have a motion, a second to approve, item two, cast your votes, and that's approved.
Thank you.
And I would just like to say that we wish the church good luck with their efforts in the area.
Thank you.
I understand they're doing good work out there, and it certainly is an area that could use the help.
Thank you. Appreciate your help.
Item three, C.E. 793, application by Chesapeake Land Company to close several alleys and streets located in the vicinity of 63rd, North Classen Boulevard.
Mr. Chairman, Dennis Fox, here on behalf of the applicant, 522 Culcore Drive. Tim Johnson and Rand Elliott and James Pickle are also here, if there's any questions in regard to this project. And of course, Dan Ladon, who is with Chesapeake, is also here. This is an application, and as you look up at your map, what you see is a grid pattern of streets, and as you look at the area, what you find is, many of these streets and/or alleys were never developed, so we have a portion of the streets that are dirt, a portion of them are streets that exist. And so we would ask that you recommend that this be approved. I can tell you a couple of things that have transpired. After we filed this, Councilman Sam Bowman reminded me that there had been a resolution that had been passed for, by the council in October, I think of '08, and that dealt with property that's within our closing. And in regard to that, Mr. Johnson, I'm going to let him speak to it, but he went out and met with an individual that lives west of the street that we're asking be closed, and after discussion, the main issue that the property owners worried about was making sure that they would have adequate access, and they were worried about a traffic light. And Dan Ladon has authorized me to agree that prior to the physical closing of the street, which is 61st Street between Classen and Charntel, that before we close that to the public, we will install a traffic light at the intersection of Charntel and 63rd Street. And in talking to your legal staff, the, I think the way to do that is to make sure that's part of the record. We have to go to the district court to vacate it, and legal staff will require that be done before they agree to any vacation action. So we are here, we have engineers, and we have our construction owner, and we have architects, so questions, we'd like to respond.
Ms. Randall, are you okay with that approach?
Uh, yes.
And are there people from the neighborhood who are here that want to speak to this particular issue?
Yeah, we have Judy Jantsch who's signed up to speak. So we'll hear from Judy.
Dennis, before you step away, you're Tim, would you indicate for us up there, I think I know where everybody lives, but could you point out for the record where there are residents, homes that are still occupied in your area up there for the closing, just so we have a good indication of that?
Yeah. Yeah, the, Ms. Jantsch and Ms. Alt live here and here. There's a residence here, this is 61st Street, I'm sorry, 62nd Street, this is Charntel. So there are three homes right here. And then the Casey's own all these lots, and there's a home there. There are also two other homes here, I'm not sure that they're owner occupied. And then way down here, there's another one. So you can see that we, in this application, we maintained open streets and access to all the frontage of all the current residents. And as Dennis had mentioned, I met with the Casey's on a couple of occasions, and we've made an application to the Traffic Commission for that signal to be approved. It does get warranted under the plan that's proposed in this area, and so that's before the traffic staff right now, and we'll go to commission in October. The other thing that we do intend to do is maintain 62nd Street, it's been improved after the construction damage that was done to it, it's been repaired, and it lines up with a crossover at Classen, which is a better full movement location than 61st would be, because you can see 61st dead ends in the Classen, you'd have to go north, you just have to go north and make a U-turn, so that's why 62nd Street is really a better alternative for the route. And as Dennis mentioned, the, the green arrows you can see on here are the through routes that'll be maintained, north-south to Charntel. As we mentioned in the last meeting, the Fire Marshal's office said that they'll either come north from I-44 in Charntel or south from 63rd. We've maintained two thoroughfares from the Classen area, you know, 5th, 62nd and 58th Street will be maintained open, so.
Thank you.
And the letter you have in your file is Casey, that Tim mentioned.
Okay, Ms. Jantsch, give us your name and address, please.
Judy Jantsch, I live at 816 Northwest 62nd Street, which is the westernmost home that's shown on the map, on 62nd Street. And that brings me to a question, when Dennis said that he visited with someone west?
Very good point, in east, Ms. Casey.
Oh, okay.
It's the one, yeah.
Okay, thank you. This morning, I received, well, you have in your file the two letters from both Grace and Gwen Casey. And then this morning, I received an email and a phone call from Gwen, asking for some additional consideration in their behalf, additional to what their letter had stated. She said, "Mother just brought up the point that we do not know when we, as residents, might need to have the ambulance come to our house and take one of us to the hospital. Mother is almost 102 years old," which I'm sure you find that just totally fascinating view of the kind of letter she writes, "and may need immediate ambulance services at any time. In August 2010, I needed immediate IMSA transportation to the hospital, like me, my brother may need unanticipated IMSA services at any time." Excuse me. Also, some of the construction workers may sustain an injury due to a major accident and need IMSA services." And we all remember Michael Parsons, who died on August 31st. There could also, I'm sorry, that is just a very emotional thing with me, that we lost one of the construction workers.
Take your time.
There could also be need for a fire department services or police services to get quickly to the easternmost, with all but one street closed, the least accessible side of the area. Therefore, having both 60th, 61st Street and 60th Street open between Charntel Avenue and Lee Avenue, and additionally, having Lee open between 60th and 61st Street would give all emergency services an alternative route to our home. That was her written correspondence, and I guess you understand, what she is asking is that there be a second route open to their home, in and out of their home, and with the closings as they are scheduled by this map, there would be no access from the Casey home, which is at the furthest must end of Lee, to Charntel, except the one little street. This morning, she said, you know, with the, the garden seminars, the garden visits, and the little children that come to be with their parents, et cetera, 61st Street is going to have parked cars on both sides like it was yesterday. We don't know the extent of construction closings temporarily, whatever, that will be taking place as this area increases in activity, construction activity. So she's begging, please, that one additional route in and out of their home be left open, with the preference being Lee to the south of them, and 60th Street over to Charntel. And as I've lived nearer the construction zone than my dear friends, the Casey's, and I can look back over the years, the experience that we've had with the street closings, some which go on for months, some which are of a rather more temporary nature. We do know that the activity, and I'm not going to disclose things that Chesapeake hasn't disclosed, but we do know that the activity is going to be greatly increased in that area, so we expect that there will continue to be additional closings of streets, even if it's only temporary. Chesapeake currently has construction in multiple sites. The entire block between Francis and Charntel, 61st and 60th, is under construction as the daycare center. Building 14, which is on its way to approval between Classen and Francis, 60th and 62nd, 61st and 62nd, I'm sorry, that entire block is under construction. In the last two weeks, the entire area from northwest 58th to northwest 63rd, on the eastern side of the campus, has undergone great changes. All the trees have been removed, bulldozing activities have, have exposed the earth, fill from building 14 excavations are already being deposited in the area. I think that's real interesting, since we don't have approval all the way for building 14 yet, but, you know, people do what they want to do. There are heavy traffic periods through the day that we are going to now ask to be routed onto 62nd Street. That's where I live. How many thousands of cars daily are going to go up and down that street? Will it have to be widened? Will I lose my front yard display gardens? I hope not. I'm sorry to say that we have grown accustomed to hearing promises from Chesapeake and seeing them broken. I think it's very important, your consideration of this, and I understand how difficult it must be to recommend that our city streets be closed. Thank you.
Commissioners, any questions of Judy?
I just had one, Judy, I'm sorry, could you? You mentioned the area on the, by the gardens there at 61st, I guess between Charntel and Lee, is that right?
Mm-hmm.
Now, you said it touched something about parking there, could you give me just a little more color on what you mean there?
Well, the gardens occupy the entire block.
Right.
From Charntel to Lee.
Mm-hmm.
And there is a gate on 61st Street to enter the garden. There's also a gate on 62nd Street, midway at the garden, to enter the garden.
Okay.
And previously, cars could park on 62nd Street, or they could park on 61st Street, and gain access to the garden. With the major construction that's happening right now, with the dirt excavations for building 14, being trucked up 61st, up Charntel, and then across the north side of the garden, and deposited on the east side in front of the Casey's home, 62nd Street is now closed for people that have children that want to come visit the garden, et cetera.
Mm-hmm.
And so they're all parking on 61st Street.
Down there between Lee and Charntel, on both sides?
Right. Both sides of the street are flanked with parking, when there are lots of visitors.
And how wide is that street? Is it?
It's just a little street.
Residential side of the street?
Mm-hmm. It's just a little street. Well, now try to get, you know, a fire truck, an ambulance, and all that down there, and when you've got construction work going on, and you've got a 102-year-old neighbor there, you have to be concerned that access to their home is going to be adequate for the needs that they may have.
Well, with a solu, not a solution, because I understand where you're coming from, would an alternative to that be limiting the parking to, no parking on the side, the residential side of the street on 61st there in front of the Casey's home?
Nobody parks in front of the Casey's, it's the block east.
The block east?
It's the block east of Casey's home.
Oh, okay, I see where you're talking about. Right there, directly south of the gardens there?
Yes.
Yeah.
Right there by the gates.
Is an alternative there to restrict parking to a single side of the street? So that you?
Well, where are they supposed to park? I mean, we've got a million-dollar garden here with lots of visitors coming, and how we're going to restrict their access to the park?
I don't know. I mean, I'm.
I mean, that doesn't make a lot of sense.
I'm trying to get to a point here to where you're, I'm sorry, but you kind of went the other way on me, I have to say.
Okay.
Because if the concern is for emergency vehicles, it seems if we're going to close part of those other streets, that we provide adequate access for emergency vehicles. Perhaps a suggestion would be to park only on one side of the street versus double side of the, of the street parking. That way, then, then you have the ability for emergency vehicles to get into the residences and have a little more access to the street. Just a suggestion, nobody's agreed to it, but I think, you know, if, if our concern is emergency traffic, that might be a suggestion to kind of help alleviate some of that concern. That was my only point.
Yes, I understand what you're saying, and, and that's a fine suggestion, but we don't want to interfere with the compatibility of the uses.
Okay.
So what would be your proposal instead?
Well, I think Gwen and her mother have an ideal proposal that the street, Lee, behind their home to 60th, and from 60th to Charntel remain open. That would give an alternate access if the road is blocked.
So the little L shape there that runs north and south halfway between 61st and 60th, and then from, on 60th from Lee to Charntel, you're talking about leaving that little L open, not closing yet?
Yeah.
That's all I had.
And that way she would, that, that way she could be comfortable and not have fears of, you know, somebody getting there to help her with her mama, and.
And did I understand that you were suggesting, or that they were suggesting as an alternative, leaving Lee open from 61st to 62nd?
No, no, no. From, only from 61st to 60th.
I thought you had suggested two possible alternatives there, that one would be the little L south, but that the other was to leave Lee open from 61st to 62nd, so that there was a, a second air, method of ingress to their property to Lee and north of 63rd.
If 61st is open, if it's left open, as shown on the diagram, that it's left open, as Chesapeake has petitioned, it be left open, then even if it is blocked, they'll still have the little L shape below Lee to 60th and over to Charntel, they will have that exit.
I get that. My question was whether there was a second alternative there that you were proposing. I thought I heard that there was a second proposal, maybe I just misheard.
No, just that we were asking for a second access to their home, that they are asking for a second access, and access in addition to northwest 61st Street.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, Janice.
Okay, Dennis, help me, I'm now confused.
You're proposing closing 61st Street from Classen to Charntel, right? That's correct. I'm a little confused on the alternatives. I tell you, we've taken a number of months to, to put this plan together, and we, we think it complies with the, the concerns that Judy had in regard to Fire Marshal and also IMSA, in that we'll have the main access roads that will provide for access to whether it's Judy's house, or Rand's, or the Casey's house. Now, Tim Johnson had the pleasure of talking to the Casey's for a couple of hours one day, and that's how we came to the agreement that we put the light in at 63rd and Charntel prior to, you know, closing the street that the council passed a resolution on. So with that, I'm going to let Tim tell you about his conversation, and then, our thought is, we'd like to leave the closing as is. If you all want to send something to the Traffic Commission about no parking on one side of the street, then, you know, that's something that we'll, you know, we'll look at, but as far as the, the closing, we think what we're asking for is fair and reasonable, and it's actually going to be a, a better plan once you have the light in there, and.
Can I ask you a question, Dennis, if, if I may? When, I, I guess, so far as the operation of the roads, I understand that we're, we're doing the closing, and then it'll proceed through its path as a legal. doing the closing, and then it'll proceed through its path as a legal process. So far as the actual closings of the road, though, for use, as part of the construction, as part, is that going to be, in other words, the sensitivity, I think, is with this single bit of access, that all at once, we now just have a single bit of access, and potentially, I don't think this is the plan, but I'd like a little more clarification about that, such that if there are 10 safe cement trucks backed up on Chertel Avenue there, and then we do have somewhat of a logjam there, it's caused by the construction. I'm assuming that's not the case.
Yep. Very good question. I'm going to let Mr. Johnson answer, and since he and Randy Elliott and Mr. Pickle work with Dan Ladon on the construction side of it.
First of all, when I, this is the first I've heard from the additional comments from the Casey's, so I apologize, I'm not aware of that. We did talk about their access and maintaining 61st Street. 61st Street in front of their home is, is just a gravel drive. It's never, it's not been maintained by the city or the county for a number of years. Chertel, however, is, is in reasonably good shape. Part of our plan is to expand Chertel in width over time, as it's warranted, when the additional development goes in, and that's what the signal will also provide for, is additional lanes up to 63rd and down to I-44. Specifically with regard to leaving 60th open, and that portion of Lee open, that does impact the plan. Any of you who have been out there know the, the big mound of dirt. That is the area just south and east of that little corner, and you can see better on the city's map than I think you can see on this map, that what's actually in place is the street on 57th comes here and dies, and goes up here, and there's virtually no improvements over here, and this is where the mound of dirt is. And so, our goal is to spread the dirt up, and there, she's correct, I mean, there's been a lot of trees removed. There's some 30-foot of fill that needs to be done adjacent to the railroad tracks, in order to make this developable. Closing the streets where we've identified them is giving us truck routes, so we can really protect the traveling public from the workers. It is our intent to maintain Chertel open at all times. There won't be cement trucks backed up on Chertel. I mean, that's just, that's got to be maintained and open thoroughfare for, for safety. And I agree with what Dennis said, and, and what Mr. Hansley was alluding to, was that we think that probably the better solution would be to, to ensure that there's no blockage of 61st Street. It's a standard residential rural section. There's, and they are the only residents that remain on 61st Street in that area, so if we could get an application to stop, to eliminate parking on one side of the street, there'd be plenty of room to pass with a fire truck, so obviously, we'd be in agreement to that, so. Do you have any other questions, or me?
Nick?
Tim, there was a question raised about the gardens, the people coming to the garden, provision for parking there. For those who don't know, first of all, who owns the garden?
Chesapeake.
Well, they put those in as an amenity.
They put those in for their employees only.
Right. As an amenity to the campus.
That's correct.
So, when people come and park there, can't they park next to the gardens? I, I don't know why there should be such a, a parking problem with the garden.
And I would agree. I mean, the, I've seen people parked on some of the grassy areas that are undeveloped. I've not been out there where the street's been blocked on both sides, you know, so I think the answer to that is yes, there are other alternatives than, which they would seek if we had limits to no parking on one side of the street.
Thank you.
Tim, I have one question. On the portion of Lee Street, between 61st and 62nd, that leads over to 63rd, what kind of, what type of street is that, or what is the condition of that?
It's a, it's about a 22-foot-wide rural section. It's not in great shape. I mean, it's drivable up to, probably the worst portion is from 62nd North to 63rd Street. There's a very steep incline there, and there's a lot of potholes there where the retail car repair service is. And on 62nd east of Lee, it's like a gravel drive that's exclusively for their use, pretty much. I mean, we'll, we'll be using it now with covered trucks to haul the dirt on, but it's pretty much a, a gravel road.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, you may.
Thank you. My name is Anne A-N-N-E-A-L-T-A-U-L-T.
Pull the microphone, you don't have to stand on your toes, just pull the microphone down.
It's Anne A-L-T-A-U-L-T. I live at 812 Northwest 62nd Street. Okay, my question is, when all of these streets are closed, and certainly, you know, I understand why they want to do it, but that is going to divert so much traffic onto Northwest 62nd, the 800 block, the 900 block, I'm in the 800 block. I'm really worried about all this, the traffic that's going to be constantly, both ways, up and down my street, getting up to Chertel, to make the turn, to get to the light, that will be the light that will be coming at 63rd and Chertel.
And the traffic you're describing will be generated how?
From Chesapeake, and also from people who, just people trying to go home, who are coming down western, they turn onto Classen Boulevard, to go north on Classen Boulevard, which, north on Classen Boulevard, has been closed for, excuse me, 12 years? I, I don't remember. It's been a long, long time, because of the building that's going on. So everybody who comes up to, for some reason, they don't figure it out, that Classen Boulevard is closed going north, so they zoom up 62nd Street. So we already have a great deal of traffic, just from people who want to go north on Classen Boulevard, plus the employees who work at Chesapeake. So now, if all the other streets are closed, every bit of the traffic, you know, they're, to get to that light, they're, they're going to come down 62nd, and I'm, I'm just worried about, you know, management of that much more traffic added to the street in front of us, okay?
Okay, thank you.
One more thing, this is Casey asked, and I apologize that, you know, Judy and I must speak for her, but I'm sure you understand the circumstances. They wanted to close the alley behind her home, is she wants to know if this can be done, since they are still living there. There's a part of the alley that's their half of the alley. May that be closed, or not until, you know, they leave? Those are my questions. Thank you.
Thank you. That's a legal question, but, just to give you something to do, Susan.
Well, if they're the owner of the property, they can choose to, you know, file an application to close, if they meet all the closing requirements.
Well, but her point is, one half, the north half of the alley, but the Casey's property, rather than Chesapeake, so they can only close the south half.
And I did have that conversation with them. Their concern was with regard to the utilities, and I assured her that the reserves would be withheld until those utilities go away. So there's an overhead electric telephone, and an underground sewer line that, actually, the sewer line stops short of her property. The physical condition of that alley right now is it's not open. It's fenced off and grass, and you couldn't drive on it. So what we're, the closing action would be to physically close vehicular access, and the vacation would then eliminate it as an alley, platted alley, but allow those reserves to remain, so they'll still have all their utilities, it won't disrupt their use, but as you say, if they object, then-
Okay.
Tim, the comment that I made earlier about the possibility of leaving Lee open between 61st and 62nd, would that be problematic for you? I, I understand about the, moving the dirt and the location of that area to the south. Would it be problematic to leave Lee open from 61st to 62nd?
It would be problematic, because of the, it's kind of a hole over there. There's, in fact, there's water that stands at the corner of 63rd, 61st, excuse me, 62nd and, and Lee now, and the property to the east of Lee is coming up several feet, so we'd have a valley in there, if we couldn't bring that across to level it up with the garden area. That's part of the request.
Thank you.
Okay. One last comment, Judy?
Yes, I was so concerned about Casey's, I didn't ask my question. And with the parking garages as they exist right now, the exits are onto 60th, 61st, and 62nd Street. There is an exit on entrance exit, ingress, egress on Francis for the parking garage on the north side of 62nd Street. But it's been curious to me how they can close 60th Street, 61st Street, and have any access to the parking garage, because the only access is 60th and 61st Street.
By closing the public street, it allows us to make private drives, and our access to be privately controlled, and that's what the goal is. But the, the access will still be where it is today on the garages, as you see it. During the construction and the closure of Francis, that traffic will continue to go out to Classen, as it does now, pretty much. Some of it goes east, but most of it goes to Classen.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Okay. Commissioners, any other questions or discussion? Motion?
And this is a difficult one for me, I have to say. I was, I was in particular concerned about the resolution, but obviously, it wasn't our resolution, it was the city council's resolution, and so perhaps it should be left best to them to sort through whether the alternatives that are being provided here meet the requirements that they had in mind when they adopted it. And I, it, it also seems to address 61st Street, which is not something that any of the protestors spoke to specifically here today. I, I have some sympathy to the concept of having alternative access for those persons who remain in place. It seems to me that they are being sort of squeezed tighter and tighter into a smaller space here, but a, a certain amount of that, I'm afraid, is just inevitable, and I, and I, I'm thinking specifically about the way we deal with second access points for plats, and it seems to me that the plan that's being presented to us meets the kind of requirement that we would impose on someone who's bringing a plat, in that we can go both north and south, and certainly can go west, if not also east, and escape to one of the main arterials.
Well, we don't require a second access until we have more than 100 homes in a newly plotted subdivision, for example.
Well, we're moving in the opposite direction here.
Right, right.
But, I, I mean, I, I would not want to deprive those people who have had that second access of, of it, and I, I'm, you know, mindful of the fact that, that it is still preserved here. So having said all of that, I'm going to move for approval. And, and I'm not entirely sure exactly what the status of Michael's proposal is. Are we going to make a recommendation, as a commission, to the Traffic Commission, that that be done?
We could suggest they examine the issue, which would just be a-
Is it possible for us to condition closing on that?
No.
It's not possible? So all we can really do is suggest. So I would, I would incorporate that suggestion into my recommendation.
And that would be restricting parking to the east side?
I, I don't have an opinion about that, one way or the other, whether it's-
The north?
Um, we're talking about east of Chertel, on 61st, perhaps also on 62nd. Well, 62nd will be closed. On 61st, whether it's restricted to the north side or the south side, I'm not sure matters to us, but-
From our standpoint, I think it would probably be best to limit it to no parking on the south side, and in talking to Dan Ladon, he would be agreeable, and we will file an application with the Traffic Commission.
I would second that motion. I'd also point out, as you did, Chairman, what the requirement for second access may or may not be, but it's been my experience with the guys that operate the emergency vehicles, they will get there, especially on this site. There's enough arched surfaces. If it's not down the street, it'll, I don't think they need a proper designated access. They may not use it anyway, but if they want to get there, they'll get there.
We're done.
I have, I have to-
No, just saying, we do have a motion in a second. Do you have something you really need to say, Judy?
The only reason for requests for second access is because the roads are blocked so much of the time.
Okay. Thank you.
And I, although I would, I would agree with Commissioner Gales, I am not seriously concerned myself about the ability of emergency vehicles to get where they need to go, the, the peace of mind of the residents who continue to live in this area is, you know, a concern, so.
Okay. We have a motion. We have a second, Nick? Did you make a second?
Yeah.
Okay. We have a motion, second, approve item three. Cast your votes, and it's approved.
Items four, five, and six were continued to October 14th. Item seven, S.P.U.D. 588, application by the City of Oklahoma City, rezone 3839 Southwest 44th Street, to the Simplified Plan Unit Development District.
Good afternoon. Mark Cranenberg, City of Oklahoma City, Department of Airports and Airport Director. This is a track, five tracks, that was a part of a noise buyout back in the mid-1990s, that the airport sought some grant funds from the Federal Aviation Administration. The buyout area was not only this five tracks, but also on the west side of Roth Avenue, and of course, this is all north of Airport Road, and as a result of us, with the acquisition of that property, it became airport property. The Federal Aviation Administration has now issued reuse guidelines for properties that were under a noise mitigation, that they be under a reuse program and disposed of in a variety of ways, depending on the airport operator. In this case, we see a, a need to rezone this from its current R1 to I1, light industrial, primarily because it's still in the airport in Byron's AE1, Airport's overlay zoning district, which does prohibit residential. I believe this was an oversight when the homes were purchased many years ago, because the west side of Roth was rezoned I1, however, these were not. We are seeking this action so that we can work with the FAA, and also to redevelop the property, so that it can be, our preference is to sell the property at fair market value, so that we can return a certain portion of the funds back to the Federal Aviation Administration, and open up the property for redevelopment, for zoning purposes to industrial. We request your favorable consideration on this. I might add that when the, the Planning Department sent notices out to the homeowners, which are just to the east of these tracks, we were very concerned about the uses, and to make sure that they were compatible, I actually sent a letter that went in that same mailing, from myself, to state that our commitment was for friendly uses, to be used, given close proximity to the residential areas, and staff worked very well with my staff, the planning staff did, in determining what those uses would be, which are mainly administrative, professional, light medical, and, and things of that nature. Be happy to answer any questions.
Commissioners, any questions? We do have someone signed up to speak. Stanley Smith? Stanley Smith?
J.J., on my, on my map like this, the outlines of this particular subject property, are those coextensive with the airport overlay? Or is this odd little thing here indicative of something in particular?
The airport overlay, the AE1 overlays, there's still homes in the overlay. That's the gray line that you see.
And those are grandfathered. I might point out also that over the recent years, the noise contours, which caused us to purchase these homes, have shrunk in, I would say, towards the airport. Mainly that's because of the FAA making commercial aircraft be stage three or more friendly, quieter engines. Also, the fleet mix at the airport is much different. Back when we had noise issues, we had a lot of the old Boeing 727s, which were very, very loud. The fleet mix and our noise contours have dictated now that the noise contours are actually much closer to the airport, and I believe are actually south of Airport Road.
Okay, thank you. I take it Mr. Smith is not here, so Commissioners, any questions, discussion, action?
Approved.
Second. We have a motion, second to approve item seven. Cast your votes, and that's approved.
I, I do really appreciate the efforts that have been made to make sure that the development of this area is going to be compatible with that existing residential property.
Item eight, PVO 73, application by Oklahoma City Airport's Trust to vacate all of Zednan Third Edition, several blocks located south of 44th and west of Portland Avenue.
Thank you. This is just an extension of the Zednan Three Edition that we purchased with those noise lands. I would say that the portion of the Zednan Three that is south of Airport Road, when those were purchased, those are considered airport development, and therefore the FAA is not asking us to do anything with that portion. But the portion north, you see all the residential plats. And in order to make this ready for redevelopment, we do need to vacate the easements and the plats that are in that area. It has been pointed out, and in the staff report, we found out through the utilities department, that there is a, I believe it's a sewer that runs from south to north across Airport Road, and then goes back to the northwest, sort of goes up the far west-north line of that addition, and then goes back to the east on the north side of the dotted line that we're asking for consideration today. And I believe that there has not ever been an easement written up for that, or we can't find one. And we are certainly willing to work with the utilities department, so that that easement is given to them. And we'll start working on that right after this action. Thank you.
Commissioners, no one has signed up.
I move approval of the application with the recommendation of the staff.
We have a motion, second to approve item eight. Cast your votes, and that is approved. We'll need a motion now to continue item nine. Mr. Anderson has left, and we have a variance request in this, second, to, let's say, the 14th of October. Okay? We're, motion, second to continue item nine. Cast your votes, and it's continued.
Items 10 and 11 were continued. Item 12 is ABC 721, application by Aaron Corbett for an ABC Three Club with Alcohol District, located at 517 West Main Street.
Afternoon. Aaron Corbett, address is 2225 Northwest 22nd Street. Represent a couple of investors who are interested in starting a bar there on Main Street. And so we've asked for the ABC Three overlay, and be happy to answer any of your questions. The concept, is it? Yeah. They're looking at doing what I would call a modern concept. The space is really small. There's a, inside already, there's a brick wall that they want to keep there. They want to do like black and white photos of older structures in Oklahoma City, spotlighting on that. Dark stained wood, leather, kind of marketing towards business professionals. It's going to be no smoking. It's going to be a higher-end type of a bar. It's not going to be a sports lounge or anything like that. So they're looking at the business professionals downtown, people that are going to go to the Civic Center that want to go have a cocktail and don't want to come out of there smelling like smoke. That's kind of the theme that they're looking for.
Okay. We do have someone signed up. All right. Lawrence Cody. If you'd give us your name and address for the record, please.
Lawrence Cody. Home address or work address?
Either one.
Well, we own, Gardner Tannenbaum owns the building across the street, and our address is 4228 North Santa Fe. It's a Montgomery Building. The notice we got shows that the area went from Concord to Maine. This drawing shows it only half that distance. Our concern was the size. It doesn't match what you've got on yours, so I was a little confused exactly.
Now, the map that went out in the notices for the entire property owned by the applicant, the actual club will be what you see here, which would be about a fourth of that, only the furniture on Main Street.
Okay. If they wanted to expand, do they have to come back and...
Yes.
Okay, okay. I was just wondering if they knew the hours...
You need to address us, sir.
Sorry, the hours of operation. I was just wondering what that would be.
Yeah, I think they're, they're looking somewhere around probably opening two or three in the afternoon. And then I, I think by ABLO laws, they have to have their last drink served by 1:30, and then everybody out of the building around 1:45 or 2:00. Of course, it's, it's 1,700 square feet is the size. I think there's probably going to be about an occupancy of around 80. If it's empty at 12:30 or 1:00, they're probably going to close the doors, you know, early type of deal.
Looking at the app there, it appears there's office on both sides of this, and then office apartment also next to it. That really residential space there?
Yes, there's a, there's a loft apartment above the office next door.
In the, the actual building, there's a loft apartment. The, the building is a two-story building, and the, the owner has leased the entire building to the resident of that. And our clients would be subleasing from him, and so he's quite aware of the concept that's going in there and in agreement. That's who we'd be getting the sublease from, is the occupant of that apartment.
Okay.
One other question.
Yes, sir.
Parking, I'm not sure what the city requires for this, or since it's just street parking, I'm assuming.
There's no parking requirement downtown?
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Discussion, motion? Move approval of the application. Jump right in, Mike. We have a motion, second to approve item 12. Cast your votes, and it's approved.
Item 13, S.P.U.D. 582, application by Civic Center Properties, rezoned 301 North Wallman Avenue to the Simplified Plan Unit Development District.
Dennis, you had no objection to that last application, huh?
I had no objection. I talked to the property owner, and I'm fine.
How's that work with that mirror?
Dennis Box, I'm behalf of the applicant. I am ready to do a detailed presentation, if you all want it. Richard McCowen is here. He's the person that has taken on for the last year putting this project together. And so we are ready. Mr. Witcher is here, who's our architect. We also have Wade Scaramucci, who's an architect in London, and he's involved in the project also. Do you all want us to put on a PowerPoint, or do you want me to address the issues in the staff report?
Why is it, no one's in opposition. I'm just curious if everyone's familiar with the project, because it's a neat project.
And we can agree with the technical evaluation your staff has put in there. I will say, we went to the downtown design review. They just wanted to make sure that we agreed with their regulations, and we do. So there'll be some modifications that'll take place, or signage will be in conformance with the DBD, and so we would ask your approval.
Okay.
In other words, we're not asking for more. Actually, they're pretty, they're pretty small. But what we'd asked for originally was a little bit larger than DBD allowed, and so when we went to the DBD group, they asked us to comply with their regulations, and we said yes.
No thunder banners over the balcony? Is that what you're concerned with?
Mr. Witcher, I'm with approval.
Second. We have a motion, second to approve item 13. Cast your votes, and that's approved.
Thank you very much.
I actually love the proposal. It just really looks like a great idea, and I hope it works the way you hope it does.
Thank you very much.
Item 14, CE 790, application by Civic Center Property, just to close private access drives and several utility easements at the same location.
No one signed up. Move approval. We have a motion, second to approve item 14. Cast your votes, and it's approved.
Thank you very much.
Item 15, application by City of Oklahoma City to close planted access easement extending from Northwest 90th Place, accessing common area in Canyon Creek Edition.
Property owners are here. No one has signed up in opposition.
I'd make a couple of real quick comments on this. In our packet, there is a petition of protest, and if you look at that petition, everyone's signing it from the cul-de-sac to the north, not where this one is proposed. There is also a petition, support, all the people on 190th. With that, I'd move approval of the application.
Can I ask a question before we do it? Why is the city making this application?
I believe it was a kind of a foul-up, beginning, trying to make it right. There's also access, there's a couple of plumes. This access is not being used to maintain the, the area now, and there's other access to it, so...
It's never been used, as I understand it.
That's correct.
Okay, I'm sorry, did we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, second to approve item 15. Cast your votes, and we're approved.
Item 16 is continued to October 14th. Item 17, C6242, final plat of Rose Creek Block 30, located north of 178th Street and west of May Avenue.
Good afternoon, Tim Johnson with Johnson Associates, representing the applicant. Mr. Tom Hotkins is here on behalf of Rose Creek Development. We've looked at the technical evaluations, and I've discussed with the staff some clarifications, and with that, we agree with all the TEs. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
No one's signed up, Commissioners?
Move approval.
Second. We have a motion, second to approve item 17. Cast your votes, and it's approved.
Thanks.
Item 18, CE 789, application by Colony Development to close planted 30-foot utility easement and private access easements, south and northeast 4th, between Oklahoma and Santa Fe.
Good afternoon. Paul LaFever, representing the applicant, and Ron Bradshaw, principal, is here with me today. This property, we're seeking to close a utility easement and private access drive located south of northeast 4th Street, and north of 3rd, and west of Oklahoma. This is a, a project that is similar to what's been discussed here previously, but this is an apartment complex that is being developed at this location. And we're certainly happy to answer any questions that you might have.
No one's signed up, Commissioners?
Move approval of the application.
Okay, we have a motion, second to approve item 18. Cast your votes, and you're approved.
Item 19, Resolution of the Oklahoma City Planning Commission, amending Section 511 of the subdivision regulations as they relate to the city's comprehensive plan.
Do I need to excuse myself on this vote?
On the resolution?
The only reason I ask...
I understand why you're asking.
Well, Dan, Mr. Bennett told me that he thought I should when we just voted to put it on the agenda.
Probably.
Is why I'm asking.
Yeah, in which case, it's continued until the next meeting.
Yeah. Come on.
Okay, we have a motion, second to continue item 19, to the 14th of October. Cast your votes, and that's approved.
And we have one additional item, which is item number 23. It's Spud 569A, application by Chesapeake Land Company to rezon 6200 Northwest Grand Boulevard.
Mr. Chairman, Dennis Box and Tim Johnson were here on behalf of the applicant, and this is a follow-up to a previous application where you all were nice enough to allow us to proceed with the east half, and this is now the west half, and will allow us to continue on our development plans and take care of all the water issues that are on the site.
That was when we sliced and diced your last application, basically.
I didn't say that. I just was thanking you all for allowing us to come back this quick.
Well, we didn't hold you up that day, exactly, did we?
That's right. You allowed us to continue on, and we appreciate it.
No one has signed up, Janice?
I had just a couple of questions. I haven't had a chance to look this over, and so I think I get it, but there was something, oh, it was the drive, the circle drive and parking on the north. Is there something I don't quite understand about that? Are you contemplating doing anything different than what's already there?
There could be a lot of changes that will take place in regard to, you know, buildings and coming down and new construction and different things. So at the present time, we really don't have specific plans, but all we're trying to do is kind of put back, you know, the, the puzzle that was taken apart, so we could have this open green belt area for water to flow. And when that didn't work before, of engineers, we're coming back to you saying we'd like to have it the way it was before.
Well, with respect to that particular issue, I guess I also was a little confused by that, although not troubled by it particularly. But hadn't, hadn't the Corps kind of turned you down on your idea of beautifying the drainage area?
They, I'm gonna let Tim Johnson, he met with them, so I'm gonna let him tell you what the Corps said.
Okay.
But the answer that we got, put us back in a position where we decided we needed to come back and, and put back in place what was there before. So, Tim?
The Corps of Engineers came and met with that, with the city and Chesapeake and a couple other developers. And what we have done as a result of that meeting is we have submitted to the Corps an application for mitigation to allow us to remove the concrete channel that's there. And they will only allow us a portion, the piece that's right behind the Whole Foods site, to be grass and left open. The rest of it will be enclosed and covered, all the way to Grand.
Oh, so it's going to be boxed?
It'll be a box-covered. That's correct.
Okay.
And so to answer your question about the parking and stuff, more than likely, it'll be driveways and parking on top of it, in lieu of what we originally had proposed was a grassy, green area, but they won't let us do that.
Okay. I remember, I remember that part of our discussion, I just wasn't piecing it together here. Okay, okay. I would beg the indulgence of my fellow commissioners for a moment, and ask you, Tim, to talk a little bit about what's going on with traffic on Grand Boulevard. What will be, currently, what is your understanding about what the improvements will be along Grand Boulevard, once this area is fully developed? I mean, how is traffic going to work?
Okay. The, the City of Oklahoma City is using some plans that have been developed by us and paid for by Chesapeake, to publicly bid in, on October 2nd, to improve Grand Boulevard from 63rd to about 500 feet south of where Clasen crosses. And that will be, the signal at Clasen and Grand will be replaced. There's no change required at the signal at 63rd, but it'll be... There's no change required at the signal at 63rd, but it'll become a four-lane street. Right now, it's two-lane first section, four-lane on the north and four-lane on the south, so it'll get rid of that bottleneck that's there now. And the anticipated completion date on that is July 1st of 2011, which is two full months before Whole Foods is anticipated to open.
Thank you. I'll move approval.
We have a motion, second, approve item 23. Cast your votes, and that's approved. Planning Commission Committees, this will be a short discussion. Planning Commissioners? Planning Department? That's not you, they're not here. Development Services Department? Municipal Counselors Office? Citizens to be heard, none. Other business? None. Motion to adjourn? Motion is second, and that's approved. We're adjourned.